I will call this meeting back to order and encourage all those who are willing and able to rise from the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start with introductions. I am Bob Cook, the Board President, and to my right is...
Emily Strazinski, Vice President.
Good evening, Diane McBride, Board Member.
Good evening, May Anfield, Board Member.
Good evening, Nell Anna Salma, Assistant Superintendent of Student and Family Services.
Hi, Andy Whitmore, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations.
Good evening, Deana Wilson, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction.
Good evening, Pat McHugh, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources.
Good evening, Nikki Laplaca, Board Member.
Good evening, Jennifer Laird, Board Member.
Hello, James O'Brien, Board Member.
George Damar Toa, Attorney for the District.
Beau Wright, Superintendent of Schools.
And we missed...
Karen Flanagan, School District Clerk.
Okay. At this time, we'll do a quick review of the agenda. We have one additional item to add, and I don't think anything else. We're going to be adding a new number thirteen and changing our current number thirteen to fourteen, and fourteen to fifteen. The new number thirteen is new business with respect to apparent appeal. And at this point, we will do announcements, and I do have two certificates to award this evening. The first one is to Nicole Laplaca, and it's from the Monroe County School Boards Association, affirming that she has completed her six hours of training in board governance. And the second one is for James O'Brien, the same thing, completing six hours. Important training for everyone. Okay. Are there any other announcements that I'm not aware of? Seeing none, we will move into our public forum. Do we have anyone signed up to speak? Okay. At this point, we are open to the public. Anyone that wishes to address the Board about a topic that is not on our agenda is welcome to do so, even though you may not have signed up ahead of time. And if you are here and would like to talk about something that is on the agenda, we'd ask that you do that when that item comes up by letting us know by show of your hand that you'd like to speak out on that topic. So at this point, I see no one interested in joining us in the current public forum, so we will close the public forum, and we will move into our consent agenda. This deals with items of routine nature, including treasurer's report, various bids, and license agreements. I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda, moved by Diane, seconded by May. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed, nay. Consent agenda is adopted, which brings us to personnel actions, which is number eight on your scorecard. I will entertain a motion to approve the personnel actions, moved by Jennifer, seconded by Nikki. Any discussion on personnel? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed, nay. They are approved, which brings us now to our workshop on transportation. If you can make sure the mic's on up there.
All right. Good evening, everybody. This is a very timely topic. You've probably all seen in the national press, school bus drivers' transportation is a concern across the nation. Certainly in New York State, there's a shortage of bus drivers. You've seen safety incidents happen, unfortunately, in the last month or so, and we're feeling a lot of these constraints as well, and a lot of impact, a lot of the issues that are going on. So what we'd like to do tonight is just give you an overview of the situation that we're facing in the Transportation Department, and then get your feedback and also the concerns that you're hearing, or sure you're hearing, issues or concerns from parents as well. So just to start off, Rush Henrietta, we do transport over 6,000 students. Not only do we transport our 5,300 students who attend our schools, but we have numerous private parochial charter school students. So we go to 65 schools each day. It's not just our nine in district schools. We transport to 65, because state law does mandate that we transport to private parochial charter schools up to 15 miles from a student's residence. What that means is there's numerous runs where we're transporting one, two, three, four kids on a bus, so we're tying up a bus and a driver to transport three or four kids. So when you do the math, and we have 6,000 kids, and we have a number of them that we're only transporting a handful of students, that's what's causing the issue and driving a lot of the shortage of bus drivers that we're experiencing. In addition, we have special needs students that we transport. Some of those can go on big buses; the majority of them go on small buses; some require special handling; we have students in harnesses; we have students that IEP requires no more than three kids on a bus. So there's a lot of need for transportation, and a lot of it is driven by small number of students. We have students going to Bosse's too, out in Spencerport, as part of their educational program, one or two students. So lots of demand for drivers, but they aren't transporting the bulk of our students. Then the other thing we have is, by law, April 1st is the deadline for requesting after-school transportation. But as a district, because we have such a transitory demographic in this district, we've always tried to accommodate it ongoing throughout the year. So we have almost 900 kids who request transportation to places other than their residence, so it could be daycare, it could be split custody. In the first few weeks of the start of school, we process hundreds of requests for changes. So we advertise, we request they be submitted by April 1st; that's when we're starting to actually plan our runs for the following year, but we get hundreds of them at the beginning of school, and we get dozens every week throughout the school year, and all of those impact routes. So we might have a route schedule that might be an efficient route that takes home within 45 minutes, but all of a sudden, you've got an influx of students in one area, and things come apart. We also have to transport homeless and foster children up to 50 miles from the district. There's federal and state laws, and because of the needs of these students and the desire to bring some steadiness in their life, they can determine which school district they'd like to go to. So if they had been attending Rush Henrietta, they'd been placed or living elsewhere, they can elect to come back to Rush Henrietta, and we have to transport. So last year, we had a bus going to Dansville almost the full year, and twice during the year, it had accidents. Once it slid off the road in the snow, once it hit a deer. We had a bus going to North Rose Walgett. This year, we have Student in Hilton. So we have to transport these kids. They're our kids, but it's a lot of resource for a small number of kids. So all of these are impacting our ability to transport kids. So right now, the district has 39 small buses and 91 large buses, and 115 bus drivers to transport these kids, and they're running 498 different routes to accommodate all of these things. Some of the other factors that are affecting our increased ride times, as you know, in the reconfiguration, we did add a tier of runs, basically our elementary runs were split into two, so it added a tier, which required more bus drivers. So even before the reconfiguration, retaining a full bus driver contingent was difficult, but then with the reconfiguration and the strength in the economy and the increased minimum wage, we've always historically paid a premium for bus drivers, because it's a tough schedule. You're working 10 to 12, you're tied up 10 to 12 hours a day, but you're getting paid seven to eight hours for the day, because there's a big gap in the middle of the day. So it's tough, and part of the appeal was, we always paid a premium. Now with the mandated minimum wage increases, that premium is lesser, the economy is stronger, they have other alternatives, so we're struggling to get bus drivers.
Well, we have 115 bus drivers that were approved for, but we, right now, only have 100 bus drivers that are employed. And we have only six of those drivers are standby drivers, and that means that those are people that fill in for drivers who are long-term sick, which right now, we have three. I believe we only have seven subs. Three of them are covering runs every day. So that really only leaves us four drivers who can cover runs for people who call in, people who call in, people who put in for personal time, and so on. If it literally was not for other type of needs, and we probably have about five to six, maybe even seven or eight, that are willing to come in. Four come in on a daily basis, AM and PM. Some come in just in the afternoon; some work Tuesday through Thursday. If it was not for them, we would be in the same boat that many, many other districts are in. We've had a few people who have left in the last couple of weeks, and instead of taking those runs and giving them to our standbys, we are tearing those runs apart, and we are giving a piece to this person, and a piece to this person, and a piece to this person. So far, we've been able to do that, but we are definitely running out of resources, and we will be losing two more drivers before the end of the year. One is going to be resigning because she turned 62. She's coming back as a sub. She wants to help out, but she doesn't need to work full-time, wants the flexibility of being able to visit her kids when she wants to. And a second one is going to be retiring, and I'm not sure if she's coming back as a sub. We've had a few people who have left, two people that have left in the last three weeks that needed a full-time job. They could not afford not to be working in the summer. They've been working two jobs pretty much for the past 10 or so years, and they needed some stability and wanted to spend more time with their families. So they found full-time jobs elsewhere and were able to, unfortunately, let go of transportation. One of those is being retained as a sub, because he's working for the Highway Department and is available after 3:00. So again, we're very fortunate that we have these subs that are really bailing us out right now in respect to what we need as far as coverage.
So you can see, we're struggling. And just a few of the other things we do, transportation requirements, balanced enrollment, there's board policies on level of class size. So if we have a family that moves in, and their district within their attendance area, the class sizes have reached their max, then we send them to another school. So that throws them into our transfer bus situation. So we have 34 students in that situation. We do after-school high school students to their work-study programs. We have the reconfiguration age-outs, where when we reconfigured and changed attendance area, we allowed families to keep their children in their school they had been attending until they progressed naturally out. So we have another year of that, where we're transporting kids out of attendance area. And then we have move accommodations. So if a family moves within a district into a different attendance area, we let them remain in their prior school, and we'll transport them. So there's lots of demands for out-of-attendance area, as well as the out-of-district transportation that we do. So we knew reconfiguration would result in some increases in bus rides for some of the students. So quite frankly, it shortened it for most of the primary kids within their attendance area, because we added buses and we scheduled shorter rides, because we needed them for the next layer. But it's the out-of-attendance area ones that we could not accommodate to the level we had accommodated in the past. We reduced the number of out-of-attendance-area buses. We have to put kids through a transfer, so we have a bus going to each geographic area of the district. So prior to the reconfiguration, at the elementary schools, we would have a bus going to each geographic area from each school. We needed those buses. We couldn't maintain that level of support, because we needed it for the extra tier of runs. So we did cut in half the number of out-of-attendance-area buses, and a lot of that is driving the concerns you're hearing from parents that the Board is hearing. You heard it with the pinnacle loofah daycare, where those children now have to go through the transfer. You're hearing it on the west side of town, and that's a part of town where the out-of-attendance-area run was originally scheduled. The start of school here, with 12 kids on it, and when we had this flood of change requests, it ballooned well over 40. We've been able to replace some of those, but it's still over 40 now, and that's where you're hearing some of the complaints as well, because people at the tail end of those runs are going up to 90 minutes. But we just want to remind the Board that when we saw this coming, we put some administrative guidelines in place, and what they are is, within attendance area, we committed to within 60 minutes, and no longer. The ideal bus ride is under an hour. We certainly recognize that, and that is our goal for within attendance area. And really, for the elementaries, most of them are a lot shorter than that. So other than a few exceptions, if you live out in the far reaches of Rush, which geographically are far out there, pretty much all of our within attendance area, kids are under 60 minutes, and the bulk of them are under 45 minutes. We did have an 80-minute maximum time for out-of-attendance area, if it was out-of-attendance area because of Board policy things. So the age-outs, due to the reconfiguration and the balanced enrollment, that, we're meeting the bulk of them, but there are some, a number of those, that are above 80 minutes. None of them are more than 90, but there are some that are above 80. And then, we did set 120-minute max for out-of-attendance area due to childcare, basically elective, where parents can elect alternative places for their children to be transported to. When we went through the reconfiguration, we talked about removing that option. Certainly not all districts offer that, but it was clear there was a need for it, a desire for it, and at the time, Karens came to the Board and said, "We don't care how long it takes, we need that option." So we gave them that option. The commitment was no longer than two hours. Well, none of them are scheduled for more than 90 minutes, but there are a number, probably about 20, who are up to that 90 minutes. And quite frankly, the first week of school, every bus run goes longer than the scheduled. And then the one on the west side of town that keeps fluctuating with the number of kids on it, when we have to put a sub on there, it's very tough for a sub, and there's been a couple of times where the 90 minutes has been close to two hours.
Because we also give our parents the opportunity of not having to schedule their student to go to one location five days a week. It could be a Monday, it could be a Wednesday, it could be a Friday. When you have somebody hopping on a bus for the very first time, or even if they've done it once or twice, you know, we're impressing upon our drivers that we want to make sure that they know in attendance who is on the bus. That's a time-consuming event all in itself. That driver might have to pull off to the side of the loop until they've checked all their kids in, to make sure that they have the right kids on the right day, going to the right location, and those things delay the bus. So we do have Bus 529, which we've had some problems with. It is a long ride. That bus is an unassigned bus. It does not have somebody assigned to it. We've had a few people who have been willing to cover it on a daily basis, but when we have an influx, where we have somebody else that's on the bus, that bus is the bus that, you know, unfortunately, might have that extended ride, because it has somebody who's brand-new on it.
So when you say unassigned, it's not a regular route for the unassigned driver?
It's not a regular route for driver. The route is established, but that driver left earlier in the year, and quite frankly, no one wanted to, no one wanted to do the run. So right now, we have a standby driver that's covering it every single day, but every once in a while, that standby driver might be out, and we have to cover it with someone else. So that's where we run into a few problems.
So basically, we certainly understand the frustration of those parents who are impacted. Nobody wants their kid on the bus that long, and they can avoid it, but the reality is, we don't have the bus drivers to accommodate it, and we knew going into this, there would be a small number, and probably, it's no more than 20 students who are on the bus that length of time. So it's less than 1% of our students, but they're vocal, because it is frustrating. So we just want you to keep in mind that some of this, we knew we were going to face coming into it, but the alternative was not to offer out-of-attendance area, and that would impact a heck of a lot more people, and you'd get a lot more complaints from that side of it. The other thing, the shortage of the bus drivers, we're constantly redoing runs. Every time somebody resigns or leaves, we have to tear apart their run and figure out how to reassign it. We've only been successful in hiring two bus drivers since the beginning of the school. We're constantly advertising. It's on the high school marquee sign. We have sandwich boards out there, but it's not as attractive as it used to be, and so our shortage continues to grow. We were 14 short a few weeks ago; now we're 15 short. We're probably going to be 17 short. And because of the shortage and having to pick apart routes and then reassign them, our drivers are, quite frankly, getting frustrated. So this is compounding. You know, there's so many changes. Sometimes the new routes don't always follow what our guidelines are, and it's causing frustration there. So all of these things are compounding, and so we're definitely struggling in the Transportation Department.
Can we be tested?
We had the influx of special ed students who moved into the district. We probably had close to 30 move into the district. A lot of them need special needs service, so we've had to take runs apart a week and accommodate the special needs for them. And some of the kids who come in with special needs, some of them have emotional issues as well, and our bus drivers are incurring increased amounts of student misbehavior. We've had drivers who have been punched in the head, scratched, things dumped on them, feces thrown at them. So all of these things are causing frustration within the Transportation Department. And quite frankly, because we're a service department, I mean, we're there to service our kids, whenever we get reasonable requests that go against our district guidelines, we do try to accommodate them. You know, my standing rule, as surely, is if it's a reasonable accommodation, even though it might be against our guideline, let's accommodate it. Well, the parents, if it's unreasonable, it'll get rejected, it'll go up to the superintendent, and he's going to try and find a way to accommodate it. If he rejects it, it comes to the Board, and you try to find a way to accommodate it, because we all, I mean, we're here to serve our public. But all of that places huge burdens on our office. So not only are the bus drivers impacted, because they don't know what the guidelines are. We might schedule three stops within five houses, because we had three different complaints for different reasons. Things are changing, so it's causing frustration in the office with the head bus drivers, it's causing frustration with the drivers. So one of the things we're going to have to do, we're going to have to step back, and we're looking at, I know I'm becoming tougher on accommodating things, especially, I mean, just this week, I worked with George, we had an attorney for charter school, because a family moved into the district with three kids at three different charter schools, none of which we currently go to. One of them, one of the schools is located within the 15 miles; the other two are, one is two tenths of a mile beyond it, the other's even further. We deny transportation to the ones who are outside of the 15 miles, because we're just out of capacity. So if we had the drivers, typically, we would accommodate these sorts of things. Now we're holding firm to the letter of the law, because we're out of capacity.
And they're trying to get clever, too, because the one, they did want us to transport all three students to the one location that was within the 15 miles, but unfortunately, the school themselves were going to put the students in their vehicles and transport some of them to the other locations, which is not within the guidelines and would leave us open to liability. So we declined that offer that they presented to us, based on the fact that it wouldn't be in the best interest of the students.
So what are some of the things we can do to address this? First thing is, we did contract with a transportation carrier. We've done that the last few years. It used to be, when we had special needs students move in, or a homeless student, our default would be go to Bosse's, because Monroe One Bosse's has a transportation department. They're facing the same shortage we are, and routinely, they tell us they can't accommodate us. So a few years ago, we started the practice of hiring a contract transportation company. The purpose at the time was for the short-term, one-off-type things. The first year, it was set up for homeless. So if we had a homeless person that we need to transport, probably two to three months, way out of district, we would contract it out. That support grew. So this year, we also, the hope was, they could help us with some of our special ed students, as we had no capacity. But when we utilize a contract transportation company, you have to bid it, and the bid has to be done and submitted and approved by the state prior to the start of the school year. So last year, we're estimating what our needs are for contract transportation, and we do the bid. The reality is, the state approved it, what we thought. Now we're relying on that company more and more. So any, once we exceed the total level of the original contract, the cost, it becomes non-adeable for the state. So we have to be careful. The other thing is, the union is getting concerned. I mean, technically, this is union work. It's district work. They've been very accommodating in the past few years for these one-offs, because they understood the constraints, and their drivers really didn't have the desire, but now, we've been using them for more and more, and the union has finally spoken up and said, "Hey, we need to talk, because this is really union work." And the last thing is, when we use contract transportation, we're much less able to verify the adherence to the state and federal policies. So I think most of you saw, over the summer, late last year, there was a state controllers' audit around the state. They selected seven school districts and did an audit, and a lot of their findings were lack of compliance when they had contract transportation. So we took a look at that audit report to see, are we in compliance? And the good news is, for our in-house transportation, which is 95% of our activity, we have a very strong compliance rate. We've been, we have very good people who ensure we're doing all the things the controller found, but the reality is, once we contract out, we don't have that same control, and we don't have that same level of assurance. So there are some concerns. The reality is, we can't rely on contract transportation too much. So we're trying to use it wherever reasonable, but there is a limit to it. One of the other things we're exploring is increasing the pay for substitute drivers. It's been a couple of years since we increased it. We rely on them heavily, so that, because that's not within the contract, we can do that outside of our normal contract negotiations. We're looking at increasing advertising for recruiting. So the HR department came up with the idea of Movies 10. You can, before the movie, they scroll ads, they're going to start advertising there. And it was, they got a year of advertising there, a lot cheaper than a DNC ad, which really wasn't yielding us anything. So they're trying to get creative. And school newsletters. Our Community Relations Department is going to put blurbs in the school newsletters, bus drivers want to try and get the word out there. Offer incentives for referrals. You know, our existing bus drivers sometimes need new people. I mean, it really can't be a cash incentive, but if we give them an RH sweatshirt or something, you know, if they bring in a referral that leads to a driver potentially being hired. One of the things we'd really like to do to help deal with a lot of stress that's being felt in the transportation offices, is add an assistant transportation director. So they would be able to help with a lot of the professional development that the head bus drivers feel they aren't getting out, because everybody is reacting to crises. And they'd also be dealing with a lot of the issues that are rising, such as whenever there's a bus incident, we need somebody to go to the scene. When there's violence on the bus, we have to stop, we have to go help the driver, call the sheriff. So we need more support in those areas. And the reality is, our two most senior bus drivers, one has announced their retirement, and the other is seriously considering it. So we're going to have a big void. So that's why we're going to be proposing in the near future, requesting to add an assistant transportation director to help fill that void.
And we do a very, very good job. You know, we've created a new employee training process. We've hired a lot of drivers over We've hired a lot of drivers over the past two or three years. But there's just certain things that we need to be doing better. You know, there's more expectations on drivers, you know. We had the one student that unfortunately was marked not correctly with attendance. So now we've made it a priority to make sure that our drivers are taking attendance. Student behavior, you know, just teaching and giving people the tools to know what to do when students are acting up. I mean, there's many, many things. You know, a driver gets in an accident, the right way is to bring that person in. Watch the video, talk to the person, see what happened, take them back out on the road. When you have an incident on the bus, especially when it's a serious one, it's reviewing that video, seeing what happened, what couldn't we have done? But the hard line of all of this is, is we don't have time to do this stuff. You know, we do what we can and we do speak to people. We do get special ed involved and they've come out and they've done training. But with all the requirements that are being put on us and all the expectations that are putting on us, you know, we've had a number of students, you know, throughout that have been hit by passing vehicles. I mean, we are getting an influx of parents that are calling us and saying, I don't want my child crossing anymore. I don't want my kid walking down the street. It's dark, there's no sidewalks. You know, again, it's retraining our drivers and just keeping it a top priority as far as safety. All that takes time, all that takes people to be able to do it. And, you know, I mean, we met again last week and we discussed all of this. But, you know, I really feel that we need to have more support in that area. And we need somebody that can come in that is very knowledgeable in every area of transportation because there's just so many things going on right now.
Some of the other things we're considering, we're working with HR to see if we can negotiate with the union to allow a higher study pay rate to increase that gap from minimum wage again. What we're going to request the board is a possible to look at allowing the elementary class size caps to be exceeded if it prevents having to place a child in an out-of-attendance area school and subject them to a much longer bus ride. The other thing is, we need to hold firm to our administrative guidelines and our district practices and policies. Because we are so accommodating, it's come to the point it's adding too much stress to our existing infrastructure. So until we can rebuild it, we've got to step back and continue, be a little firmer in these things. Look at things, I mean, it's getting to the point where basically, if we have another driver leave, we don't have the ability to tear apart runs and add. Right now, the drivers are stressed because if we tear apart and fill gaps in their schedule, many times they had buffers in between runs. So if they were delayed on one run, there was a gap so they could start off their next run on time. Those buffers are now gone and that's adding to their stress. But we also don't have flexibility. So we lose more, any more drivers. We're done pulling apart routes and we're not going to be able to handle something. So we're going to potentially look at requesting things like, can we end the late runs at the intermediate schools? Can we consolidate some of the junior high school late runs? Because our afternoons are most constrained times. It's already impacted our athletic teams. We're doing things different than we've had before. We're mixing boys and girls on buses, which leads to other issues. But because we don't have the buses, we're doing that. So we're going to continue seeing degradation in our typical level of service as we try to accommodate our shortage of drivers.
We'll be pulling our mechanics. Our mechanics right now, they have volunteered, the ones that come in late have volunteered to come in. The ones that start at nine are volunteering to come in at six-thirty or seven and cover something that's like a one-student pickup and a drop-off. And in the afternoon, our mechanics that normally leave at two o'clock are volunteering to do our sports shuttles to free the drivers up that are just doing the simpler runs where you're just going from school to school and picking up and dropping off. They're willing to fill in so that I can take those drivers and put them on runs. The only problem of it is, is that does stress those drivers out because I'm putting them on runs that they really didn't sign up for. So, you know, we try to pick carefully who's a little bit more flexible and, you know, who's not.
And then one of the last ideas we had, what about our district approaching Monroe County School Board and seeing if we can get any interest in doing some legislative actions? And to me, now that the Senate is no longer Republican-controlled and the Republicans are big proponents of charter schools, can we change the law that we only transport the charter schools within district boundaries? Because most charter schools were designed for urban areas and that's where the bulk of their students come. But they fill their gaps with the other districts. But we're transporting one, two, or three kids, you know, twelve, fourteen miles away that ties up buses. Or even, same thing with private schools. Can we change the state law that there has to be a minimum of enrollment of at least fifteen students in an out-of-district private parochial or charter school before we have to transport to them to free up some of the buses? Because we're certainly not the only ones facing a shortage. All the districts in Monroe County are, some to greater extent than others. But we need some sort of relief because the mandates keep increasing. The definition of homelessness was expanded. Foster child was expanded, so, to accommodate needs of students. So every, when charter schools came out, it expanded. So there's, they continue to expand the mandates for providing transportation. But we're at the breaking point where we don't have the capacity to handle it. So at some point, we need some legislative relief also. So that's our lightning of woes, so enough for questions, concerns.
I really wish that the families that were here before with their concerns were here to hear this tonight. I think they would have a little bit better understanding of what's going on. I mean, I understand their frustration. I really wish they would have heard, be able to hear our frustrations.
Yeah, it's not lack of desire. Because nobody likes to see a kid on a bus for ninety minutes. It's lack of capacity.
You mentioned about twenty students are on the bus for around that ninety-minute time. Those are elementary students?
Yes.
Primary elementary students?
Basic.
K three?
I guess I would just like to add that I think that, you know, you're doing a terrific job with very difficult constraints, both environmentally, in terms of who's available to drive and who's willing to drive, and also constraints that we put on, you know, as, with respect to the requirements for the out-of-district attendance areas. So we really feel your pain and we understand the difficulty. And I think we really are pleased at just how hard that you work to try to accommodate the needs that are out there and the requests that people make. We're here to try to help too. So I think some of the things that you've talked about clearly are going to require us to take some action to help you. If there are other things that we can do, I think we're amenable to trying to do those because this, the whole transportation area is critically important. And it becomes such a source of complaints. As you said, it's a small number of people, but obviously, we don't want any of our residents and their kids to be unhappy with their experience. Because once the day starts bad for some kids, that's the whole rest of the day. So I think, you know, just some, I think if there are other ideas that we come up with, I think they're worth trying to explore. I just, one question that I had, which relates to an idea that a parent raised to me, and I don't know whether this is true, false, or not. But this parent was indicating that for, that we're required to continue to run buses even if we know that there are students that aren't really riding the bus anymore? For example, my daughter is in high school. Her boyfriend takes her to and from school every day. She no longer rides the bus. So is, if, and my assumption is, I see the bus still comes to our house occasionally if I happen to be there. So is there a way that parents can waive having the bus, the bus stop for their kids? And if we promoted that, would that potentially reduce our capacity?
Well, we've thought about that, how we would come up with a form, whether it be sending a schedule or contacting, well, we wouldn't be able to contact, it would have to be some type of a form that we would send. The problem is, and already for our high school runs, and we're starting to do this for our junior high runs as well, we overload those buses because we know not all the students are going to ride. Ridership with high school, and we're finding even middle school, and I will let you know that we're taking, we're doing a whole new ridership on junior high in all of our schools over the next month. The problem is, is that, number one, unless you get really compliance or response from at least eighty percent of parents, it really isn't going to help us. When you divide a run and you put it in an area, like a geographic area like this, even if, I mean, number one, we don't get notifications. So if a bus is still stopping, which they don't want to stop if they don't have to, it means we haven't been notified. We do try to call parents. If within the first couple of weeks, we see that a student is not riding, we will make them what we call a will call, which means we don't stop unless they call. But if you're doing a geographic area like this, even if you have one student that is in that track per se, or two students, you might have thirty kids or fifty kids assigned, but every time you have to go into that one track, the distance that you're traveling, unless it's that one kid that lives right on the Avon line, we have to go the distance anyways. So we might save ourselves five minutes, but it's not going to impact us that much. Unless, again, we knew exactly how many kids weren't going to ride, where we could actually broaden that geographic area and make those, you know, make those just the stops that we make. So, you know, we're trying to come up with ideas of how we could do this. But I think that we would have a hard time getting parents to reply because lots of times, even when we call a parent and say, we see that your child hasn't ridden for the whole month, their response is, is that they are worried that if they tell us that their child is not going to ride, that one day that they need the bus out of the entire school year, they're not going to get it. To them, it is worth not saying that their child does not need transportation. And we run into this frequently. You know, a lot of parents will say, my child drives, you know, put them as a will call. But we will probably get at least twenty percent that will say, do not take my child off this list. Do not make them a will call. Because they don't always want the responsibility of having to make that call in the morning and say, my child needs a ride. And, you know, that's just reality.
Right. I wondered, and I hear you, I think you're probably right, absolutely right. But I wonder if it would be worth publicizing the idea to people, you know, we really are having a bus driver shortage. If your kids are not going to ride the bus, please let us know now and allow your student to become a will call. Because maybe there would be even a couple of routes that we could condense and given that we're fifteen to seventeen short, one or two might make a difference.
I could tell you that you could probably do that very easily with combining even like our junior high and our senior high runs. We're going in the same neighborhoods. The schools only start, you know, our drop time is five minutes difference, you know. We drop at the junior highs at six forty-five and we drop at the high schools at six fifty. If we combine, if we were going down those same streets, and we do do this for our kids that live out in Rush. We do combine runs, we do have kids that are riding on both runs. That could help us significantly.
That makes sense.
I got a feeling there's a lot of families that don't realize that they could do that will call.
Right. Might be worth a shot. Another idea, which, I don't know if this is a good idea or a bad idea. I'm just throwing it out there.
We're looking for any ideas.
Would it make sense for us to consider paying drivers throughout the summer to make them a year-round employee in order to try to keep them on board? So that it becomes more attractive than to take a full-time job somewhere else? Again, I don't know if it's a good idea or a bad idea. I realize it's a costly task.
He's probably doing this, but it does create its other.
It would help with some, but the problem is that you're doing it to all. But one thing we did, we did start was with the summer school and the E S Y, the special ed extended school year program. It used to be Bosse's transported all those kids. We've opened it up to our drivers. So we try and give our drivers opportunities if they want them.
Yes. Well, and I will say that anyone who has signed up for a summer work, they've all gotten positions. Anyone who didn't get a position, which I have not found that to, you know, that has not happened. I mean, the problem is, is they don't get as many hours. You know, I don't know if we guarantee more hours or whatnot so that they do have a flat. I have spoken with Ken Nelson. I've said, look, if I don't get, you know, if I don't have enough work for these people, you know, he's always looking for people. We try to work together on that. I think the bigger issue is, is the, when they have breaks, when we have like a week off. You know, I mean, I have a driver right now who's monitoring and she's not going to get her permit because she's waiting for her next paycheck. You know, we had Thanksgiving, you know, we've had different holidays. And when they don't get paid, they've talked about possibly using their personal time or sick time, whatever, on days when we have vacations. Again, that's, you know, it's a negotiating thing. But those are suggestions that have come to me so that they're not losing that pay when we get those weeks off and they're only getting paid for one day and losing four days' pay. That's, you know, that's significant.
What about, I presume there's some sort of application process for high school students to receive parking spots at the high school, right? Is there any way to tie applying for a parking spot to, you know, waiving your seat on the bus and freeing up resources that way?
Well, that would make the assumption that they're always going to drive and that's the issue. You know, parents have, the pushback that we get is that, well, what if my son's, my son's car breaks down? You know, how will they have transportation? And it's making that call in the morning. It's making the parent understand we're not taking them off the route. What we're saying is, is that we're not going to stop. We're not going to open our doors. We're not going to tie up traffic to wait for someone who's not coming out. What we're saying is, is we'll keep them there and if ever you need a ride, you call us. But many of them don't want to be responsible for making that call in the morning because if they forget, then it's their student that may not get the ride.
Other thoughts, comments?
And just so you know, when a student is missed, even whether it's their fault or our fault, we usually always tell the parent, we will do a courtesy. We'll do an all-call. We'll try to get somebody out there. We'll document it. And even though we say we only do it once, I know that we've done it twice. And we will tell parents, you know, we have done it before. We need to let you know that, you know, we cannot do this again. But we try to be as accommodating as we can. Tell parents, we understand that there's many parents out there. It's frustrating for them that they're going to be late for work because their child missed the bus. So, you know, we try to work with people as much as we can. And all of my staff is very good about trying to accommodate that. And in the same sense, instilling in them what the guidelines are with the district about being out on time and not making the bus wait.
Okay. Anything else, anyone?
I just want to say thank you for what you do on a daily basis. This is, this is a complex issue and it's something that, you know, when I sit at the superintendent's table on a monthly basis, this is something that we're all dealing with. I think that there are some possible solutions that we can further explore. And I think, you know, later on in the year, we'll be in a better position to make some recommendations to the board. I think the task of our team is to look at possible solutions which show the most promise or could potentially be the most impactful in terms of actually addressing some of the issues that we're facing. Because there are a lot of possibilities. There are a lot of ideas. I think we have to flesh out which of those ideas has the potential to actually solve the problem and then come back to you with some recommendations.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We really appreciate this briefing tonight.
We have great people working for me. It makes me happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight. That will lead into our, excuse me, workshop on mental wellness.
All right. Well, we have two present, three presenters, as a matter of fact, from the National Alliance on Mental Illness. And one of the things we set out to do this year is really to do some education and awareness around what mental illness is, what are the signs of mental illness and how can individuals get help and where to get help? Because we hear a lot about the issues, but sometimes people don't know where to turn to. And so that's why we thought it was important to bring the guests from the National Alliance. And they do a lot of work in schools, in classrooms, with students as well. They travel across Monroe County. So I'll go ahead and let Tim introduce our guests and then we'll go from there.
So we are, we're very fortunate today to have Lynn Fisher with us, Letty, who, or Letty Gogo's? Sorry about that. And Cam Bossgraver, who are here from Nami, Rochester. And what they're going to do is they're going to do a presentation around ending the silence, which is-
which is what Ms. Anson had said, really is about understanding mental illness, resources that are available, and then also personal experience. So understanding what it is like to live with and live with someone who has struggled with mental illness. So those, that awareness piece to really help us better understand, and then also educate our staff, our faculty, our students, and the community. So with that, I will turn this over to them.
Thank you, Cam. Okay. We come offering you something that will not cost you anything. We come offering you a great benefit for your students and for your staff, that all they have to do is call Lynn and say, when can we get on your calendar? And I want to say before I start, I want to introduce myself a little further. I am Cam Mossgraver, I have three daughters who are now all in their thirties. Two of my daughters do have mental health diagnoses, one has a diagnosis of A D D and depression, and they can co-present sometimes, which makes it really difficult to determine well. So now she's taking her antidepressants. My oldest daughter has a diagnosis of bipolar disorder, and she is a suicide attempt survivor, which makes this program extremely endearing to me, and, and there is the impetus for me to get out. I also worked, I just recently retired after working for twenty-five years in the Rochester City School District. So that's why you saw me shaking my head about the transportation issues. I was a paraprofessional in my class, in different classrooms. I'll age myself, I worked in fifteen to ones, which don't exist anymore, twelve one-ones, eight one-ones, inclusion, semi-inclusion, one-on-one. I've worked in just about every different capacity. And the last twelve years I was in the district, I was the parent liaison. And my job as parent liaison was to get parents involved in the school and to match up resources for my parents. The last three years, the parent liaisons in the city school district were offered, well, we were given the opportunity to help solve critical attendance issues and chronic attendance. And one of the first slides we'll see is we found that mental health conditions were at the root of most of those critical attendance issues, to the point, we had one child who had such separation anxiety, we saw him for five days the entire school year, and CPS was working on it, Hillside was working on it, Villa of Hope was working on it, and it, it was a very critical situation, but we were trying so hard to match services for this parent to go. So without further ado, with, now this particular, go ahead, we can get the first slide, we'll go past that one. What mental health affects all different parts of a child's life and the child's health. One statement that is not in this presentation, but we almost, it's a mantra at the beginning of every support group that we offer, it takes up, there are two classes, two of our signature programs, which you've been giving information on, the whole first episode, the first whole class of a six-week class, and the whole, and in a twelve-week class, the whole first day of that class is, mental health is a physical health condition that can be brought on by outside, by outside impacts. But it is a mental, the mental health conditions are physical conditions, they can be, a, a person can meet recovery. It's not, it, it's not a life sentence of, of struggle, but a person can hit recovery with medication, counseling, lifestyle changes. There is hope. There isn't recovery yet. Now, there isn't, you know, it's not like, well, I recovered from my cold, but, but they, but you, you work at recovery, and, and you can make it happen. Okay. So why, why is this important? Why is this important that your district has made such a great endeavor and a great challenge? The first one to me was the most striking. You look at, when they're talking thirteen percent of children having mental health experiences or conditions, they're starting at age eight. This data is from the National Institute of Mental Health. I know I've seen, there have been cases documented even earlier than age eight. So this is not a program that, well, we just want to teach, we just want to have the high school teachers do this. This is material that all the staff, and all the staff, including the bus drivers, because mental health conditions could be part of the problems that some of these students are having. The one in the middle is, I think, one of the most striking, the pieces we need to look at statistic-wise. One out of five of the children in your district at any given time, any year, this, this figure has been pretty consistent, will have a mental health condition. Again, another, up in the upper right-hand corner, that seventeen percent of high school students seriously consider suicide. That means, yes, they have a plan, they have means, they are, they are serious about committing Fifty percent of the children between the ages of eight and fifteen have a mental health condition, but they don't receive treatment. And a lot of that goes because it may not be recognized as a mental health condition. And as we go on, a big change in that is looking at behaviors as symptoms and not behaviors. And when you make that paradigm shift, that you're looking at symptoms and not, and not just bad behavior, it, it changes the way we, we look at our children. Twelve, half of all lifetime cases of mental illness begin by age fourteen. And, and so that is why we must, we must help our children and not wait until they're older. Again, in the dropout rate, fifty percent of those children that do have a condition starting around the age of fourteen will drop out of high school statistically. It also makes a great impact on our juvenile justice system. And over the ninety percent of youth who do die by suicide had one or more mental condition. And this is what really, I, I looked at this statistic and I said, no, that can't be right, because it's not what I read before. In the brochure we've given you, a lot of these statistics are in there, and you can always get more statistics at, at, at the website. The brochure you have says that suicide is the third leading cause of death, people in the ages of fifteen to twenty-four. That was written in 2014. This program was written in 2018. It is now listed as the second leading cause of death among people in the ages of fifteen to twenty-four.
It's meant to be this way.
I ended the silence.
Studies show that one in five teens are living with a mental health challenge.
However, it doesn't work.
Don't be afraid to say this.
Speak up for your support.
If we all speak loud enough, we can end the silence for good. Join the conversation and find support at www.reachouthere.com.
By the way, these are all, I know it was sketchy, but they were all made by high school students for high school students, the videos and this program.
And the program that we are presenting tonight is designed to be presented to teachers, so some slides we're going to skim through. But this slide will list some of the mental health conditions, and the one brochure that we gave you goes into much more depth about what these mental health conditions look like, and specific, specific things you should look for in each of these particular conditions. Early identification of the symptoms is critical and essential. And this is why you matter, this is why educators matter. As we all know, most of our children spend more waking hours with their teacher than they do with their parent, or their bus driver, or their, or their coaches, all the people that they spend their days with. Teachers are trained experts and are trained observers, and just, if, all you have to do is ask one what it takes to ride an I E P, and they will tell you what great trained observers they are. And that's, that is really key to helping our children. Important behaviors at school are early signs and can identify mental health issues early, sometimes as early as even kindergarten or first grade. And a lot of times, if a parent has only one child, and they can't see that maybe what their child is doing is not appropriate, because they've just learned to live with that, it can be seen in the school setting, sometimes these behaviors show, show earlier. And you and your school provide a critical link for referrals, because the schools are all linked to community agencies and can make the referral for the child. No, no, please, don't do it.
I was a high school teacher many, many years ago, and I know that the, the amount of work that's put on teachers, but I stress to them when I give my talks to teachers, if you take a notebook, just have a notebook by your side and jot down things that are unusual, things that are out of the norm for a student, and just get that information to a counselor. Each school is going to have their own system, but it's critical that those teachers learn the importance of just noticing what's different, noticing these warning signs, jotting them down, and then reporting them to the parent and to the counselor. As I said, I was a high school teacher, I know the, the amount of work and burden, but if we can press upon those teachers, that they can make that difference. They are that link between a student who's struggling and getting help.
So there are four steps to the early intervention. We are going to look at the warning signs. And step two is reach out and respond. Three and four, working with families and students and providing resources. We are going to, we're going to focus a lot more on the warning signs, some of these are more building-specific, but we'll go through those more quickly. So let's look at some of the warning signs. I, again, am going to age myself. I think it was back in the late sixties, early seventies, there were the seven warning signs of cancer. Does any, am I really the only one in the room who remembers this? They were on bookmarks, they were up in your doctor's office, they were in the school nurse's office, everywhere you looked, you saw posters of the seven warning signs of cancer, to the point, I can still recite many of them. But yet, we know about these warning signs about mental health, and who do we tell? You know, it's not a secret, we really need everyone who works with our children to be aware of these warning signs. And as we look at these, the, these are sold, for example, feeling very sad or withdrawn for two weeks. The key here is the two weeks. A lot of these warning signs, you know, you might see occasionally, what makes them important is the intensity and the duration, and as, as educators, how much it really impacts the child's learning. But feeling sad or withdrawn, we all have bad days, but if you go two weeks and you can't function, and you're unable to complete your assignments, you're unable to focus, actually, I, I would hope if it were my child, someone wouldn't go two weeks, but it, you know, but that's, that's the threshold they, they put here. Severe, out of control, risk-taking behavior that harms others, things we may have seen of the child getting up on the top of a monkey bars and jumping off, all kinds of things, pushing someone in the hall, jumping down two flights of stairs instead of walking. So they're going to do some of these things to be silly, but again, if they're doing that on a daily basis, and, and especially if you see them really trying to hurt someone and, and make that anger, like kicking people or pushing people. Sudden overwhelming fear, panic attacks, overwhelming fear, that it gets to the point where it's physical, you get the racing heartbeat, the, the child almost has to go to the nurse because it, you know, they, they can't breathe, they are very uncomfortable. If it's very, that so, that severe, that, that has to be taken notice. Seeing and hearing and believing things that aren't real. I had a two-year-old child one time, and she told me she was listening to the angels. She was talking with the angels. Now, she was hearing voices, but at least at that time, they weren't telling her to hurt herself. But that was kind of a red flag, and we then, we made note of that, but then we all start, also started noticing her inability to complete assignments, her inability to focus, even though she was a very bright young girl, something was really interrupting her education, and it really needed to be looked at more, more closely. Distinct changes in mood, behavior, personality, or sleeping habits. My daughter, my youngest daughter, one of our first signs that something was really wrong was, she was a gold level swimmer in USA Swimming. She swam varsity when she was in eighth grade, she swam since she was nine years old, she was at a meet almost every weekend, and all of a sudden, around the beginning of her sophomore year in high school, you know what, that coach is a real jerk, I don't want to swim anymore. And then it was like, I don't want to swim for the team anymore. And this was something, she had invested countless hours and years, and all of a sudden, it just held no, held nothing for her. And so that, that was the first sign, and then there were more compounding, but that kind of sign, you have a child who's played basketball for years, all of a sudden, he doesn't want to go out anymore, you know, like in the middle, okay. Those, those can be symptoms, there, there can be a reason for that. Extreme difficulty concentrating, staying still, we, we all know that child. But when it comes to the point where it puts that child in physical danger or causes school failure, there has to be an intervention. There has to be, that, that can be a real symptom. Again, number, the intense worries, fears. We all have worries, but when it, when it gets to the point where you can't do your job, where you can't, you can't finish your assignments, you can't concentrate, you can't focus, that's a real, a symptom that has to be considered. The next one is basically eating disorders, throwing up, using laxatives, eating to lose weight, significant weight loss or weight gain. Use of alcohol or drugs excessively and then self-harm. If you see, so after my daughter decided not to swim anymore, I noticed some cuttings on her wrist and at which point I picked up the phone immediately, called the counselor at school and said, please talk to my daughter. Please pull her out and talk to her because this is going, something is not, something is not right. Could you mind adding anything to those or you could?
Lenny, do you have anything to add? Would you want to wait?
Okay.
Lenny's going to share her story at the end. He's obviously a young person who lives with mental illness. I myself live with a diagnosis. I won't go into my story too much. It happened more in my twenties than, than in my young years, but I'm sitting here today because I'm in recovery and I had a supportive family, I had supportive doctors and I got treatment. Wasn't easy. I went a long time, living in symptoms and what I live with, I can share, it's, it's called schizoaffective disorder, which is a combination of schizophrenia and mood disorder, depression. And I just, my little blurb for the night is that people can recover even from schizophrenia. It's not a death sentence. I have held a job for 15 years after my diagnosis. There were some years I didn't have a job. There was years I was spent a long, long time in the hospital. But I, I want to stress that because people don't see people get better. There's so much stigma and the whole purpose of our presentation is to give warning signs to help people be aware, but also promote recovery and reduce stigma because stigma's an ugly thing. Kids who are suffering with mental illness, you add that layer of stigma and it's just another burden. It's another burden. They're already suffering and then, you know, the stigma of being discriminated against or being made fun of for what they, what they're struggling with. So that's, I had a little tiny bit. We'll move on.
Again, we already covered this. It's the intensity, duration, and level of distress that makes to know the warning signs and when, okay, maybe this is a one-off to this is really something we have to take seriously and something we have to really start documenting. What you might see in school, man, I could go down this checklist. Misses classes frequently. My youngest daughter missed 10 consecutive math classes before the math teacher picked up the phone to tell me she'd been cutting class. And it was around the time of parent-teacher conferences. So he said, I think we better conferences. Yeah, I think so. So when I went in and, and we, you know, we talked and he said, she's, you know, she's missed so much math, she's really going to have trouble catching up. And they're like, you know, I work in the district, we're on the same website. I'm the only mosque graver in the district. Just shoot me an email. Well, I don't use the district email. I said, okay. So, so I thought, well, as long as I'm here, I said, we'll, we'll keep in touch. But I said, as long as I was there, I went to check with her drama teacher because she was a drama major. All my kids went to school, the arts. Drama teacher goes, you know what? She's not living up to her potential. She's a bright girl. She's not completing her assignments. Crash and burn. Went to the next teacher, crash and burn. I go, when were you all going to tell me that? Were you going to wait till I got the report card and saw failure in all of her subjects? So I'm one of those parents. I picked up the phone and called the administrator and said, I'm really concerned that my daughter's crashing and burning and no one chose to tell me that except the math teacher. So we had a conference and at that point, one of the people at the table did something they tell you not to do here, but he was a resource person and he suggested it in such a kind way. He said, you know, your daughter has a lot of the symptoms that my son has and he has ADD. You know, I'd really suggest you go to your doctor and, and see if, if she could do, see if she could talk with Jen and there's certain tests you do and, and that to see if, if she has ADD. She was missing her assignments and tests. Quality of work had gone way down. She gives no meaning to the word disorganized. She was not violent and she never did say anything about suicide and, and thought to death. The experience, again, the social isolation was, you know, staying away from all her friends on the swim team and cutting out of that. The hopelessness, you know, sometimes people look at it and go, yeah, it's adolescence, it's teenage angst. When that, but when that gets in the way and when that becomes so consistent and overwhelming and gets in the way of completing a assignment, gets in the way of their education, that you, that has to be documented, even if, okay, not sure if this is teenage angst or not, but I'm going to document it. I'm going to write it down because if it happens again next week or two days from now, then I've got a pattern, then I've got something to, to go to people with. Frequently seek special conditions. I, I need extra time to finish my report. Can I go do this in the library? Can I only do half the assignment? This is a big, you know, that type of thing. Shows patterns of perfectionism. It can go the other way and you're not happy unless it's absolutely perfect. And responding emotionally to grades. I laughed because that wasn't really an issue. But if a child is very like, I didn't get that A, you know, what am I going to do? That type of thing. Okay. Northbrook, probably the other side.
That's very well. The next slide?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Now, what do parents see at home? This is where the next key piece is, you know, what, what are your parents seeing at home? Consistently runs late and I think that was done as an excuse so she wouldn't have to take the bus. Buses were, buses were the bane of my existence. And just because you're not in control there and, and, and getting there on time, getting the bus and scheduling and so on. Unexpectedly rude or misplaces belongings. Isolated, again, doesn't participate in social situations. Now, the use of alcohol and drugs excessively or hypersexual, if parents see that. A child who feels sad, hopeless, empty. Overreacts to disappointment or failure, highly reactive to rejection, criticism. Difficulty sleeping and high activity levels at night. My oldest daughter, I, I don't know how she ever, I don't think she slept well from sixth grade through 12. And lies and making up stories. Parents may see that at home. Those are, those are things they'll see at home that should raise red flags. And that's why we also do this program for parents as well.
I'd like to add one thing that parents might see at home is lack, and teachers as well, lack of motivation. We call it, you're not motivated. When somebody's depressed and Lenny, I think can allude to it later, when you're so depressed that you can't get out of bed, doing the simplest things are monumental tasks. When I was severely depressed, I couldn't even, I mean, brushing my teeth that day was a big deal to get out of bed. And if you see an adolescent who's struggling like that, rather than label them, labeling them unmotivated or lazy or this or that, look into what, it could be a biological, chemical imbalance or biological depression. It's not always laziness. Some of the signs can be deceiving and we attribute them to things when really it could be a mental health condition. So that's a big one, I think, is lack of motivation. Parents see that or teachers see that as, as a weakness or something when it's in fact a symptom.
Now, this is what parents might see in younger children. They never slow down. They're demanding and they've got their heads in the clouds, hard to please. Now, this one, difficult to handle at home, but not at school. It's usually reverse. A teacher will call up and say, I have a real concern that having, your, your child is, is being very disruptive in class. Well, he's never disrespectful at home is usually, but it can happen the other way around. And I, I do know I had parents who were afraid of their child because he became very physical. But at school, he, he never, he never got physical. And some of that can also be the way meds are released and the timing of medications and how they can be released. So then it, it's time, it's a warning sign that the medications need tweaking. Severe separation anxiety. I told you about the little boy who only came to school for five days. Now, that was a very extreme case, but separation anxiety works both ways. That can be the parent not wanting the child to leave as well as the child not wanting to leave the parent. Pouncing off the wall is being very impulsive and difficult to manage. Low frustration tolerance, making it difficult to be in family activities. Again, disrupted sleep cycles and night terrors. If, if that happens repeatedly, that is a, a real, a real warning sign. Extreme irritability, aggressiveness, again, that abrupt mood change, mood change and imagined body pains can be very, very significant. These are common warning signs of, of suicide specifically. Talking, writing, or drawing about death. That can also start with young children, that you could see a young child fascinated by drawing weapons or being, or showing himself dead, laying, lying down, showing himself dead. Again, there was a third grader who, every day, yeah, I'm just going to kill myself. Now, I used to say that. I don't say that anymore. That's not part of my vocabulary anymore. That all, I was so stupid, I could just kill myself. You can't, I can't say that flippantly and I, I just, I don't use that vocabulary anymore. But when a child says that once, okay, you know, maybe, you might say, gee, is there another way to express that? But when a child says every day with a look in his face and a demeanor like, I'm going to kill myself, you know, I am just going to kill myself. And this is a third grader. And, you know, I noticed that and I, I brought to the attention of, of people that, you know, we have to really start keeping track of this. One day in the lunch line, someone had made a mangry. He looked at that child, he goes, you'd better watch out. You don't know when, but I am going to kill you with the coldest stare, the, you know, with the most intensity. At that point, it was, okay, this is a, we're way beyond, you know, we're, we're way beyond our, our capacity to help this child and we really need to make an intervention. The child did end up in residential hillside. There were a lot of other contributing factors, but he did end up there. Talking about having no reason to live, being a burden, not being here tomorrow. Don't, do not respond with, oh, honey, everything's going to be okay. Take, take those, take those comments, take note of those comments. Again, that's when you get your little notebook out and I'm, I'm very concerned I heard this. Feelings, again, hopelessness, being trapped. Looking for ways to attempt suicide. Someone comes to an educator and says, you know what? I was with Johnny in the library and he was on, he was on websites that talk about hot ways to commit suicide. I'm really concerned for him. Take that seriously and follow up on that. Giving away possessions, loss of interest in things that they care about and behaving recklessly. Those are all common signs of suicide. Again, in younger children, change in behavior, preoccupation with that. They, they just worry about death more, more than, more than necessary. Again, risky behavior, jumping out of a moving car. I've seen kids do it, running in a busy street and talking about threatening suicide, like my young kid. Anger, irritability, and violence can all be signs of, of warning signs of suicide in younger children.
I'll, I'll add one quick thing. When I hear people say, oh, they're looking for attention, they're just looking for attention. Kids will say that about other kids or even adults will say that. And I always say, then give it to them because they need it. They're asking for it. And not to ignore it. Don't just brush it off. Take it seriously. I've heard, I've talked to people about who have just, you know, said, oh, that's just, they're just talking, they're not serious. And it actually happened. The child did die by suicide. So it's something you can't take lightly and as I said, don't just think of it as they're looking for attention. Maybe they are, but you need to give it to them.
This, now this page, again, this is more what we would be talking with educators, with teachers about. So we're going to just look at that very quickly. If you believe a child is contemplating suicide, and this is something also to share with your parents, that parents need to know. If they think their child is contemplating suicide, do not ignore it. Ask them the question, are you thinking about suicide? Asking that question does not put the idea into a child's head. There is a little brochure given out by an agency in the city and it says, suicide is preventable. There are three questions you ask. Are you thinking of suicide? If the child answers yes, you go on and you ask, do you have a plan? And if they go on and say yes, you ask, do you have the means? And if they answer yes to all of those questions, you do not leave that child alone and you get them immediate help. You find, you get immediate attention to the child. You don't leave them alone. And this is where I understand every building has a mental health contact and then the building, this is building procedure. So we're not going to worry a lot about that. Again, we reach out, it's, it's a team. It's the mental health, it's the student, it's the family and we can, and then respond. Go on, it's fine. Again, this is just again about what's going to happen in the school and that it's important that everyone in the school knows the procedure for that building. Who, who are the people we go to? How do we do this? And it's important that the parents know who those people are. So if they have an issue, they know they can call, they know who to call if they see these symptoms at home. Okay, that's, we're going to. Again, this is more for teachers, how to reach out to the student and ways that they can listen and focus and ask the right questions.
When we do our presentations to students, we always say, find that trusted adult. If it's a teacher, if it's... If it's a teacher, if it's a counselor, if it's a friend's parent, but find a trusted adult you can talk to. It's not always a parent sadly, you know? Maybe they just can't share with their parents, they're too close. But we tell the kids, whoever that person is, go to and share your, your thoughts and concerns. And hopefully, they know who those trusted adults are, they have one in their life. And if they don't, then you make available, you let them know who the counselors are. Bring them in, show them a face, a caring face that says, "You know what? If you're struggling, here's somebody you can talk to." And sometimes even they have, teachers can put a sign in their window that's suggested in one of the things, in one of the brochures. This is a safe zone. And the kids know they can go there and they can talk freely with the counselor, whoever that person may be.
Again, how to talk and how not to talk to students. This is a focus that we definitely make with the teachers and we can go on with that. Reaching out to families, again, the same, being empathetic, reaching out, listening and removing that blame. You know, "This all started when you took that second job." Or, you know, "I understand, you know, there's been a little difficulty in the family." No, you don't, you don't place blame. You don't, it, it is a physical illness that is, that can be exacerbated by outside environmental factors. It's no one's fault. And that, for me as a parent, took, I, I still carry, I, I carry guilt that my daughter had to be in the place that she was. That I didn't recognize things that had happened 20 years before. Hindsight is so 20/20. But we, we have come up with a mantra in our house that we didn't know what we didn't know. And what I think is beautiful about this program is hopefully you're not gonna have parents in that position looking back 20 years ago. I wish I had. I wish I had known. Or a teacher with a student saying, gee, I wish I would've known how to talk to that student. So, don't, don't place blame. There's no room for that and no time for that. Acknowledge the frustration. I, I was talking and that there's different stages of dealing with mental health. And the first one is just total frustration. I call it treading water in quicksand. Cause you, you just, you just feel like you just can't get ahead. You just, it's a place you've never been before and getting through, getting through it and you just feel overwhelmed. So that's where your parents are in there. Now, communicate the empathy and compassion and, and de-stigmatize. Talk about the mental health condition as if you were sitting down with that parent and saying, you know, "We've noticed that your child is going to the bathroom five times a day at least. They're constantly wanting to get drinks of water. They're constantly, at certain parts in the day, they're really exhausted. Our nurse is thinking, these are really symptoms of diabetes and we're very concerned for your child. That they should, has your doctor ever tested your child for diabetes?" And with that same kind of matter-of-fact approach, you know, we, we've observed these behaviors. And again, you take those behaviors and you call them symptoms. We have been observing these behaviors and we're very concerned for your child. And we think it would be worth sharing this information with your pediatrician. And again, we can go on for that. Again, what happens to families? I don't think we, let's hope we don't have to go through those. Let's hope we all know enough how to be compassionate and empathetic with our parents. Again, now this slide just kinda pops up. Not every child with a mental health diagnosis will need special education services. And not every child receiving special education services needs, you know, has a mental health condition. What might happen though is there may have to be accommodations. And it may not be a full-blown CSE or a full-blown special ed, education assignment. But there may have to be special modifications, like where to sit in the room. Don't put my daughter in the front row because she needs to know what's going on behind her. She needs to be as close to the door and with being able to see what's going on. So that is, if that frustration is known, we make accommodations for that. Every time we go to dinner, we know, we make sure, okay, she has to sit here because her back can't be to the door. And she's also left-handed, so that makes it really tricky sometimes. So there may have to be accommodations. It may not, it may not require a full CSE. But when that diagnosis is made, then there may have to be accommodations. So just, that's just, be there to help the families navigate. That, that's another system we all know well, too well, that can be overwhelming. Okay. Again, emotional reactions of families, the guilt, the trauma and the being stuck in, the treading water, you know, treading in quicksand. And again, work with your families and students. And again, this is more how we would, we would focus with staff. So we're just gonna... Yeah. Now, okay, bullying, as the negative outcomes of bullying. Bullying can contribute to the anxiety, the depression, other mental health situations. With, again, hindsight being 20/20. Our daughter, our oldest daughter, who was, when she was in sixth grade, was bullied almost daily by a student in her class. And, you know, the teacher talked to me, we talked to the teacher, the teacher talked to the other students, the students' parents. And it, it wasn't physical, it was all very emotional and to the point where my daughter became physically ill. Stress is an amazing, an amazing thing. Her white count was so high, the doctor thought she had appendicitis and it was all stress. And it was at the point where prior to that, Friday night, she would come home and you could just see her go like this. And then around five o'clock Sunday afternoon, she just, you could just see the tension. And Monday morning, she would throw up because she had to go to school. And I went in and I talked and then, so we did, is this her stomach? And we went to the doctor, is this, you know, physical? And after we had the scare, thinking she had appendicitis, she was absent from school for two weeks. She went back. This is before the robocalls, when children, if you were absent, you got the robocall. I'm at work, I get home, I get a call from the teacher, "Oh, is Christina still sick? We missed her today." I said, "Nah, she..." "The bus was not in front of the house, it's at the corner." "Nah, she went out and got on the bus." She spent the day walking around Genesee Valley Park instead of going to school. So we went in and talking with the principal and she told me that it was normal for 12-year-old girls to get up and throw up at the thought of going to school. Like I said, I'm one of those parents. So I told her she was no longer in charge of my child and what other kind of accommodations were going to be made. It, it took a week and, and it went up the ladder a little bit to, it was late in the year and you don't transfer in March. And then I was told there was gonna be a transfer. I'm waiting for transportation. Call transportation. "No, there's no transfer for your daughter." I said, "Okay, I'll homeschool." You know, that's fine. And eventually, they gave us a homeschool tutor, a home health aid tutor for the remainder of the year. And I know how hard those are to get, so I know somebody messed up and they, they were, you know, they, they made accommodations. But again, it's that, that communication and it was very scary. So bullying can, it can be so much more and it's something you can't take real lightly. It can lead, it can really intensify, you know, it can also, it can intensify these symptoms already. And it, it's just one of the important risk factors that hopefully we can control. Okay, we are going to, I think we're just about ready to... And resources, but we have given you a number of resources. We want you to share these with your parents. All these programs are free to your parents. There are support groups, classes, just then, and there is information in here about ending the silence, which is the program we offer to the high school students and middle school. And if you're interested in any of those, if you have any other questions, you should also have Lynn's card. Did Lynn's card come with the information? And it's also on the back of the one brochure. So please, if, you know, I, I know we're really running a little late. And so if you have questions, please don't hesitate to call and we'll, we'll do that. And now, please, Lenny was, we're so lucky to have her tonight.
You can all hear me. I'm Alenny, I'm 21. I'm a fourth-year student at RIT. I'm studying psychology and I'm going for sort of graduate school for psychiatric nurse. So a little bit about me is in my free time, I love volunteering and I love art and painting and journaling and I spend a lot of time volunteering with NAMI. So that's a little bit about me. So, I struggled with anxiety all of my life. Like we talked about, it can start as early as age eight. For me, it started around age seven. So I wasn't aware of it until I reached the end of high school, about 12th grade. I started going into college, so that transition from high school to college, and that's a very long time. I didn't really know anything about mental health. My parents are both immigrants from Greece, so they were both very uneducated about it. So I didn't really know anything about it. I went to Mercy High School, private Catholic school. I didn't learn anything there about it. So I was kinda lost. So the way I learned more about my anxiety was through friends. In high school, I would hear from a friend, from a friend, from a friend, talking about their anxiety. So eventually, I kinda started to pick up on some things on my own. And I would just have consistent panic attacks all the time. And my freshman year of college, I was on my way to class and I just like collapsed in my dorm hallway. And my throat was like closing up and I didn't really know what a panic attack was. So I thought I had to go to the hospital naturally. And I called my mom and, you know, I was like, "I have to go to the hospital. Hurry, come get me, no one's around to help me." And, you know, I was just freaking out and it was very scary, you know? So that was very terrifying. So aside from that, I had all of the warning signs that we went over. Sad all the time. I was isolating myself all the time. But aside from that, I was also having high energy. So I was super impulsive. So I wasn't sure, we say a lot of times, you know, are we just a moody teenager? I didn't know if I was gonna just grow out of it. That's kinda what my parents thought. So I kinda just brushed it off and thought maybe it would go away. And it was my freshman year of college, so I just let it go. And it got worse. And so it started to get worse and I kinda took on the task of finding a therapist and psychiatrist and started medication. But I kind of thought that it was stress, depression, cause that's all I really knew. I didn't really, that was kind of what was known to me. I didn't really know anything about any other mental health disorders. Depression was kind of, I don't know, like the poster child of mental health to me. So I didn't really know there was anything else for me. So this is why my treatment wasn't working. So nothing was helping. A year went by and nothing really seemed to help. So eventually, I stayed in bed all day. I couldn't go to school. I missed two weeks of school consecutively. I couldn't eat, I lost 20 pounds. I avoided all texts and phone calls, self-medicated and eventually found myself in the hospital. So this is when I attended, Strong Hospital has a partial hospitalization program. And I attended that. And later on is where I realized that I had bipolar disorder. So this is why I was kind of impulsive and then depressed and I had no idea what that meant. So that's really where the change was for me. So for people who are unfamiliar with bipolar, it's when the mood cycle between highs and lows. So for me, I would stay up all night and I would have, to me, I kinda laugh at it now because my mom would kinda think I was like a mad woman with all these different projects. And I thought I was being super productive, so I didn't see it as a bad thing. So I was up all night and I had like a book I was writing and the papers everywhere. And it was really, to me, I thought it was a good thing and I was on top of the world. But then I would get really depressed after and I wouldn't finish any of them. So then I thought like, wow, I started all these amazing things and then I couldn't even follow through with them. So it was like a vicious cycle. And then a few months later, I would go back up again. I'd do that again and then I'd go back down again. So it was a cycle until I found the right medicines and right therapy and all of those things. It's another thing about medication. Bipolar medication, listia makes you very thirsty. Fun fact. You drink a lot of water. But for bipolars, like we said, sleep is very difficult. The way I kind of, also helped me with my doctor is I keep a sleep tracker and I'm a tracker. So I keep it in my phone and it creates a graph of my sleep. And my graph was very rigid. So that was the best way. I would go maybe three days without sleeping. So I'd just bring that into my doctor and they would assess me properly. So eventually, I replaced all of my negative coping strategies with good ones. Like I started reading good books more, you know, I used to love to read when I was younger. And I stopped when I was super depressed and I got back into that and doing a lot of deep breathing and things like that. Volunteering, volunteering really saved me a lot. Right after I got out of the hospital, I went straight to NAMI and I've been there ever since. So that was really awesome. So, like we said, just like any other physical illness, diabetes doesn't make a person any less lovable. And if a person's health isn't improving with a physical illness, it doesn't mean that someone isn't trying hard enough and they're not to blame. and they're not to blame. I usually stress that a lot with the kids because they don't typically understand that till they get older. So I lost a lot of friendships along the way because of stigma, but I have found a lot of the social supports who understand me a lot through NAMI also because like-minded people and positivity. So I still struggle and I always like to end on talking about recovery. Being in recovery doesn't mean I don't have bipolar disorder anymore. But I don't have to live in this whirlpool anymore. Because when I start to feel that way, I can, I have my therapy, I have my medication, I have my friends, I have my coping skills, I have NAMI. So I just recognize my moods and my triggers and that has really been key for me. And I wouldn't be who I am today, I think, if it weren't for my diagnosis. And some fun facts, this summer at the NAMI National Convention, I received the Young Leader Award. And I am on the Board of Directors for NAMI Rochester. So I didn't think that's something I'd be doing at 21. So I don't think that's also something I'd be doing if I didn't have my diagnosis. So I always like to tell the kids that it can take you far if you kind of push for recovery. Thank you.
And I really want to thank you for your interest in the topic and for inviting us to be here and share the information. Thank you so much.
Any questions on anything?
Anyone have any questions?
On what NAMI does or anything?
I would just like to say briefly, in my day job, I work in advancement for the University Rochester Medical Center and I work very closely with the Department of Psychiatry and so I'm pretty familiar with NAMI and what they do. And so I just want to say thank you to all three of you for coming here today and telling your own stories as well and for all the work you do in the community at large and right here in our own community as well. Just thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome.
Thanks.
And if you can just spread the word, that'd be the best thing you could do. Because our support groups and things for families are so critical. We have the basics and the family support group and the family to family education groups. They save lives, they change lives for families.
Because as an educator, when Christina was hospitalized, I had to get educated. I had to, what did I miss? I needed to get educated. And I went and I took the basics, which was a six-week course. And then I told Jim how great that was and then he came with me and we did the 12-week course immediately following. And now I teach basics, Jim teaches family to family. We've become very involved and again, just trying to get the word out there. So, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you again, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
What, if we could leave them here? If we leave them here, then you could share the resources? And thank you for.
Okay, let's move on to the district policies, pardon me, first read. I know Sue Smith sent a number of revisions that she had noticed on this afternoon. And I think, Jennifer, did you agree that those were all appropriate? Okay, did you take account of those already Karen? Okay, so we'll, let's assume that those are already taken care of. So are there any other, we'll do this on an exception basis. Are there any issues people have? I saw one thing in 150. On the third page, excuse me, the, oops, the first full paragraph, the top of the page, there's a bullet. But in the first full paragraph, there's text that says, "Such report shall be filed with the superintendent." I think that's, I don't think that belongs in there because it doesn't connect anything. So I think that ought to be Xed out as well, if everyone's comfortable with that. We'll take, take that line out. Anyone have anything else?
I have a couple of things. And to be, full disclosure, this came out while I was out of town and doing this on your phone is not really doable.
That's the mistake I make quite often.
On the 150, I just, this was just a question, on the third line where it says, "Upon the principles, an individual are entitled to be treated with dignity and respect." I just wonder, I get that this dignity and respect as maybe the plural, but it still reads better to me if it just says, "Upon the principle that individuals are entitled to be treated with dignity and respect."
I agree with you. It's actually a singular principle, it's not, drop the S.
Dignity and/or respect, it's.
Right.
So we're changing principles to principle?
Yeah, yeah, just drop the S off of there.
No, it wouldn't be or.
No, no. Yeah, we want to do both. Anything else in 150?
No.
All right, any, anything on another policy?
In the middle of, on the first page of the regulation, which is the first thing, where it says, "Sexual harassment includes unlawful conduct and blah blah blah," and there are bullets. I'm not sure where it reads, in the first bullet says, "Submission to that conduct is made either explicitly or implicitly a term or condition of an individual's employment or a student's education." The reference to a student's education seems odd there. I just, I don't, I'm not sure what, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's not like you're not gonna get, you're not gonna be admitted to school, like you're not gonna get the job of, you know.
Maybe you're not gonna get an A. Right.
I get the quit, pro, or ask of it, but I thought that was kind of down below in the other part. I think it was just something, and the other, in that same section, where it talks about an employee or non-employee's work. Now, I know why you use that phrase because you read it later on in the definitions about what's going on. But I, would it be out of line to use a person's schoolwork or students' or student's school performance rather than have those two categories there? Because to me, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't mean anything until you read what comes later on. That is part of the law. That was in all the, that wording was in all the model policies. Okay, all right. I didn't have access to the model policy, so I just, I just read a little article.
It does read that, but, okay. Anything else on this one?
Non-employees is defined earlier in the, in the policy as well. But I think it's later on when it talks about the, anyway, I'm finally, I just, to me, it was just an awkward phrase.
Okay.
I think sometimes the model policies have some awkward phrases in it, but that's fine. I'm just asking questions. And on the same, on the exhibit, and I didn't have a lot of chance to look at this, but under the statute, it talks about a standard form for the complaint.
Right.
But you've made it a required form. It's labeled as a required form and I wonder if we want to label it a required form. Because I don't think, if somebody sent you a letter with a complaint in it, you wouldn't reject it because it wasn't on the form. I did only have a chance to look briefly at the statute and it referenced that it would have a standard form.
Okay, where does it say a required form? Sorry.
It's in, it's in the.
That may have come out of one of the model policies.
It's in E2. Is it E2? I'm trying to find where it was. Yeah, it's in E2 for students, the last sentence of the, of the second paragraph. And it's also in the last sentence of the second paragraph of E3.
I don't have a problem changing required to standard. I think, can do that throughout.
Yeah, I think that that's.
That makes more sense, I agree.
That's all I have on that.
Okay. It's everything on all of the 150s?
Yeah.
Does anyone have anything else on the 150s? How about 160? Anyone? 160, or how about 330?
On 330, I just wondered about the addition of the, that third paragraph, it says, "A superintendent or TESIC D."
Yeah, that, that's wrong. That's one of the things Sue pointed out.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah.
She's gonna keep the not and delete the A.
Yeah.
Right.
Unless we find ourselves in a multiple superintendent situation.
Yeah, right, yeah, that, that was a mistake. Right, and then the line before that, it should say, "Provide the superintendent with a basis." The A was supposed to be before basis and though was supposed to stay in. It was just a mistake there.
Yeah.
All right. Anything on 110R2? I'm just going through these one by one in case George, you have anything.
I don't, I don't have anything else.
All right, anyone else on, any others? 1240, 1240R, 1400, 1510, 1510E, And that would be it. I should accept a motion to approve these as revised tonight, moved by Jennifer, seconded by James. Any other discussion on the first read? This is to move them to sec, the motion is to move them to second read. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Those are moved to second read as revised, which brings us to the superintendent's report.
Okay, a few things to talk about. I'll try to move through them as quickly as we can. First and foremost, in September, we had a few families who expressed their dissatisfaction with the way that we were providing meals at the alternative high school. If you'll remember as a board, you asked us to get some information from the students themselves so that we could get a better sense of what students thought about the way that we were providing meals within that program. You've had a chance to review that information. You'll see the, the results of the survey were somewhat mixed. However, there were a number of students that said, you know, either I don't like the way that the lunches were provided through the machine or the machine oftentimes breaks down. So we've also had a chance to look at what, what it would cost to change the way we provide lunch service to the program. You know that there's a cost associated with that, approximately $35,000 plus the cost of equipment. And it really is a matter of weighing sort of the cost benefit if we were to make that change. And that's something that you all will have to decide as a, as a board. But as we progress with that conversation, there were also some concerns that Tim raised because one of the benefits to the way that meals are provided right now is that they have a lot of flexibility with their instructional program in terms of, of how they structure lunch periods. And the concern that came out of the building was that they wouldn't be able to have that flexibility any longer if we were essentially assigning a staff member to provide lunches during a set time period. So the short of it is that we do have some information from the students, but we really need to go a little bit deeper in terms of our own study of what this would, would look like to see if it is gonna be feasible. The sense that we need to get from you all is, assuming that it is feasible, is this something that you want us to pursue? And if it is, then what we would probably do is sometime in January, we would, we would have you act on it. This would be, if, if we are gonna make a change and this is something that we will be looking at for next year. But we want to get a sense from you, if this is feasible in terms of scheduling, do you want us to pursue it?
What do people think?
I would, only because going along the lines of the mental health, if we're talking about kids who already have these struggles and they're feeling like second-class citizens, I think it can make or break them for some of them. If every person's important, like they are, I think it's something to look into.
Nikki?
I, I know it's said, been said in the past that they did this before, where they brought meals in and the meals were always cold. Is that still going to be a possibility if we go to this newer model? Because do the kids realize, okay, yeah, we have to warm up our meal now, but now we're not gonna have microwaves and it's gonna be cold food anyway?
Do you want to speak to that, Andy, or we're all going, you want to come up?
Give you the expert advice, just come up here.
So part of looking at that is looking at equipment to avoid those situations. However, you will get situations because we're transporting it from the high school, especially in the winter months when it's very cold out and you're transporting hot food. There's gonna be a loss in temperature. So there's, so there is, we would have holding equipment to hold the current heat. But to reheat, we don't have ovens to reheat the, so we have to avoid it anyway for the, for the purposes of being in compliance with serving food at the proper temperature. But there are those possibilities that, you know, you could lose some temperature and where it may meet the specifications by Monroe County on heat and what the temperature is and time, but the student may view it as, well, this is, this is not really hot, it's, it's just warm sometimes. And that's a problem we ran into the last time. It's a possibility, I can't say it never would happen, but it is a possibility, especially with the transport.
Are there less expensive options for heating the food once it's brought to the Webster Building? Like those little blue gel flame things, you know, that you see on buffet, I don't know if that's a.
That's a holding, that's basically for holding, that's not for heating. Those are sturnos. Yeah, those are more for holding.
Holding the temperature, not bringing it back up.
Yeah, not bringing it back up.
The other concern I have by switching that is the serving times. I mean, they've got a pretty good range right now for the students and that would be a concern to me, that the flexibility of the programming. Or if the students are there for a reason and somebody's having a rough morning and we don't make it to breakfast at 7:30, but at nine o'clock, I'm ready. I've worked through whatever I needed to work through and now I'm ready for breakfast. They'd still have the flexibility at nine o'clock to do that versus bringing in the warm stuff. We'd have to condense. So that's, that's also a concern to me.
I think, yeah, that's certainly one of the operational issues that I think has to be examined if we look further. I mean, I, I had real concerns about some of the students that mentioned that they were getting moldy food from the vending machines and I wondered, is that a common occurrence? Is that, I mean, that's a great concern.
I saw that on the review.
Right.
I had never had a complaint where someone said, here, we got this from the vending machine. We rotate on a daily basis. So, and it's refrigerated. Our sandwiches are prepared fresh and refrigerated, so it holds for no more than two days. And we only put a certain amount in there so that there isn't a lot of waste. We know how many we're going to sell. It rotates, it's on a rotating system. It's labeled, it's dated. That, it has brought to my attention or to the attention of the food service that there was a moldy product in our machine. I have never had that, that complaint.
Looking at the numbers of students who actually ate now using the vending machine, you can see that less students are actually doing that. If you look at the numbers before, when we got the hot meal. So it doesn't look like we do need to change something. But I'm trying to, I'm wondering if it's, do we need to both, switch both meals? Or can we do the hot lunch, hot meal for lunch and keep another option, explore another option for breakfast? Because I think lunch is always something that people would like to have, hot and ready to eat.
So.
Is that a possibility?
I guess your question is like having both options available or having, I'm sorry, I guess I need clarification. So are you asking if we could have the, like for breakfast, having a vending machine and then for lunch, having hot service?
Yes, or it doesn't have to be the vending machine themselves. Because I see in the report it says we cannot keep them if we decide to go another route, right?
Right, for, yeah, for the purposes, you wouldn't have to have more, more staff if you're doing both.
We're doing both.
Yeah, if you're doing both.
So can we explore another option for breakfast? Like I saw in the high school, they have a card in the hallways where they can, the kids can have access to breakfast after the first, yeah.
Correct, and if you look at the, at the proposal, we will purchase a card to serve the meals for breakfast and lunch. So it would be a card, same, same card, but remember, you're. But remember, you're transferring at the high school down the hallway. You're transferring food, food down the hallway to a holding cart, where the food is hot and, and we'll hold hot food. It's the same, we would be doing the same thing. The only thing is we're going from one building to the other and holding it. So part of switching it over to having uh a meal at the cart would include having that cart, and that is included in the, in the cost uh is having the meals on there.
Does it have to be a hot breakfast, or they can't have like cold cereal and milk?
It doesn't have to be a hot, a hot breakfast. It could be cold cereal or milk. However, if the complaint is that they're having, you know, they want hot foods, since um then you're insane.
I felt like they weren't complaining so much about breakfasts. At least it sounded to me, it sounded more like lunch, boys, chicken and stuff being robbery.
You just think of breakfast foods as being like cereal or bagels or fruit, or just things that can be kept at room temperature.
That would have been a compromise where we just had to supply one hot meal.
Right. Well, the other thing is if, if it's primarily cold things at breakfast, they can be available longer too, right? Cause they could be more of an à la carte thing. So it may not, it may reduce the issue about, you know, whether people have bre- when they have breakfast. People could maybe eat in their classroom or whatever, so it's something to think about, maybe.
So am I getting the sense that if, if we are able to work out some of the scheduling issues, which potentially could in- impact instructional program, um that you would want us to pursue this?
I think that's the general consensus. I, I don't see too much dissension from that thought, so.
Okay.
I'm still not sure. I'm not either with the, I'm, the cost is my thing, thirty thousand dollars. I know it's a, but I know budget, I was just at the budget meeting last night and looking at the numbers, it's like adding another thirty thousand dollars plus another eleven six for the equipment, that just it, I, I know it, to make them happy is, is we wanna do everything we can, but at, at what cost?
I don't look at it as happiness, I look at it as that mental health. Kids that are there are struggling with something. I mean, everyone's a little different, and that could be a make or break it for them. Not, it's not generally about being happy, it's about feeling equal to everyone else receiving something.
I use the rough term.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is a school, it's not like a, a temporary program we have. This is a school part of our district. So we sh- it should be, they should have access to the same services we offer to other kids, so.
Yeah, I think the equity issue is pretty important, and that's...
It's not quite the extreme of yanking the tray away from a kid or giving them just a cold cheese sandwich, but to me, it's on that continuum of lunch, Andy.
Alright, so it's, we don't have universal agreement, but we certainly have a, I would say, a, more of a consensus than, than not a consensus, to at least continue to pursue it. And when we come back, we can, obviously, we're not making a decision tonight anyway.
That's right.
So.
So we will, we will go back, we will see if we can work out some of those scheduling issues, assuming that we, that we can. Uh we would put a resolution forward, uh probably uh in, in January, and you can continue the conversation and uh decide how you wanna uh proceed.
Very good.
Uh, along the same lines, um we have been, uh my understanding is that the conversation around the, uh, you might as well just stay right where you are. I, I know that there has been in the past um conversation a- around possibly exploring the possibility of establishing um a summer food service program. That conversation has been rekindled, uh because we've been having some conversation about the sustainability of, of kicking hunger, uh an initiative that we, that we all value and wanna see continued. But there are some, some issues there in terms of, um, you know, it, it's a lot of work for, for a small group of people. Uh, the group relies uh very heavily on, on donations, and there are questions about uh how long folks can sustain that effort. So w- we began talking about what we may be able to do as a community uh to help uh not only sustain what we have, but to build upon it. And so, uh we revisited the conversation of, of uh establishing a, a summer food program. Um, well, I, we would be, this would be a new initiative. We would be looking at doing it at Sherman, that is uh the school within the district that has the uh highest percent of economically disadvantaged students. It would allow us to serve uh any child that's eighteen years or un- under during the, uh, during the summer. Um, and the district would be uh reimbursed for the meals. If we were to proceed, we would set it up as a, as a pilot. Um, and uh, you know, we're, we're excited about the possibilities here. And so, uh, you know, quite honestly, we, our team doesn't necessarily see a downside here uh by starting as a pilot. But we would, we would wanna make sure that you were on board and were supportive of it. And again, this is one of those things that we would, we would, if you're supportive of it, then we would um bring a resolution to you probably next month because there is um more of a sense of urgency in terms of, of making sure that the, the paperwork is complete and submitted.
Yeah, and, and the reimbursement, just to build on that, is a per-meal reimbursement. So within there, it's to cover both your variable and fixed costs. So you do need a minimum participation level to get enough volume to cover your fixed costs. So that's why, um, actually, when we first looked at it, we thought Wenzel, because not only do they have the summer rec camp with about a hundred twenty kids, they have the extended school year program with forty-five kids, so you've got a hundred sixty-five kids. But the state just last week came out with the eligible schools, and Sherman was the only one not eligible. But they do have the summer rec program. So you've got a hundred twenty kids right there. And, you know, if I were a parent, I would love to have breakfast and lunch taken care of for me, if any child qualifies. Um, and, and Geraldo has looked into this for a, a number of years. He, it's been building up. And, and the places where it's held currently, like H I L I, um, to be successful, they said it has to be partnered up with other programs to ensure participation. Um, and, and this seems to be the ideal location because of the summer rec.
I'm sorry, Andy, you said Sherman was or was not eligible?
It is the only school that is held. That's why originally we're going to go Wenzel with a hundred sixty participants already in the school. It's not eligible, but Sherman is. Sherman does have the summer camp, so you've got at least a hundred twenty kids who are already there every day anyways.
Any other questions or comments about this from folks? Thoughts? I mean, seems like a no-brainer to me.
Yeah, we just need to, the pilot, basically, we're dipping our toe into this to see if, if we're gonna get the kids. We're gonna get the volume to get reimbursed for it.
Yep.
So I'd say full steam ahead, we look forward to a resolution on that one.
Alright, very good. Um, next, we wanted to uh update you in terms of the uh Marketplace Mall Pilot. As you're aware, the district set aside a million dollars in anticipation of a, a pilot reduction at Marketplace. And uh, an agreement was reached on a four hundred thousand dollar reduction this year, leaving us with about six hundred thousand dollars that's gonna be placed into techs' treasury reserves. Um, so next year, the proposed pilot reduction will go from four hundred thousand to six hundred thousand. Um, we are, we are in support of moving forward with the arrangement. If you're comfortable with the process of reassessing the property and reducing the pilot, then again, we will move forward with a resolution for your approval uh next month, Andy?
Yeah, if you're comfortable, yeah, the next board meeting, um, yeah, so next month. Uh, basically, it's, it's a process, those were, if you were here last year, we agreed last year to look at a year-by-year reduction, rather than give a permanent reduction, given the struggles. Um, and so the assessor, again, this year, we looked, came up with a new value. But by the time they had done that, they'd already paid based upon last year's assessment, which was a little bit higher. So they've agreed not to ask for a partial refund, but the assessment they came up now, a six hundred thousand dollar reduction, will kick in next year. And we already, out of the two million dollars worth of pilot payments that Marketplace is obligated to, we've already reduced our revenue by a million dollars, not knowing how this was going to unfold. So we think we're covered, because not only do we have the six hundred thousand on the main mall next year, we have the, the significant potential that Sears will go under, which is a hundred ninety thousand, and J C Penney is in play as well, which is another hundred sixty. So we think we're covered, worst case, we, so we don't have to do a further revenue reduction. Um, and if, if we continue this path, I, I, I think it's, it's progressing evenly a- and we're following it. So it seems like a logical thing, as long as the board still agrees with that process.
And has, has the, has the town actually done the assessment at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
They haven't given us the exact number. They gave us a phone call, we talked to Steve Schultz, and he gave us, you know, it was a thirteen percent reduction. So we backed into, it's a little under six hundred thousand dollars, but it's roughly that. So I need to get the exact number, but we're pretty comfortable.
But that would be in the resolution. I mean, I think this is what we went and decided to do last year. It seems like the continued prudent path um to cover our downside, so. Everybody comfortable with that? Okay? You've got your consensus to bring that forward next time.
Moving right along. Um, and, and then just a couple of, of items uh for oral information. Um, an update on, on Good Shepherd, we're, we're making progress, uh slow progress, but progress nonetheless. Uh, the agreement hasn't been finalized, I'm told, for, for a time. They were having trouble finding the, the original abstract.
Our agreement's been finalized, uh for all intents and purposes. They were looking for the, the title.
Okay.
But the church has owned the property for so long that they, that they couldn't find them, and it wouldn't have made much difference anyway because of the period of time for the redate. Uh, so they have ordered new title information. They'll be sending me the title report. In the meantime, they have moved forward, they require a court order to sell the property, and they're already processing that. They think that'll be done mid, mid-December, actually, before the end of the year. Uh, the title work, once I get it, will take a week or so just to turn it around and have the policy ready and then.
So the closing would be?
Early next year.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, early to mid-January. We think we're getting there. We're getting very close, slow with Sheriff.
That, that's good news.
And just remind everybody, the money has been set aside. It was set aside last year. So we're just waiting for paperwork. There's no more, no further financial implication.
So that's where we are with Good Shepherd. And then the last thing is, um, we are, we, I, I've been pushing the team to uh look at, at some ways that we might be able to um improve the learning environment in, in Roth. It's, it's, and when I say the learning environment, I'm talking about the physical space in, in the building. And um, so we've been looking at, at improvements um that, that wouldn't be that costly, that we might be able to roll into other capital projects. We're actually in a unique situation right now where we've been able to realize savings in other areas. And one of the things that we were looking at and talking about was uh replacing the lighting in certain common areas, especially the hallways, because it's very dark in there.
Do you?
Um, replacing them with, with LED lighting so that it's brighter, it's actually more efficient, more cost-effective. Replacing the ceiling tiles and doing some, some minor um aesthetic work in the, in the hallways to kind of brighten it up. Uh, we're in a position where we could, we could do that now, or we could try to roll it into projects later, but we're, we're looking at trying to do it now, uh because we can. Um, so again, this is one of those things that if you are, are supportive of us pursuing that, then we can get you more information next month. Uh, it would be in the form of a, of a budget transfer. Um, it, it would be, it would be uh costly, but we can, we're in a position where we can cover it now because we've realized savings in, in other areas.
In terms of order of magnitude, what rough cost do you think it would be in terms of a transfer?
About two hundred ninety thousand. Costs.
Thoughts people have?
Where's that two hundred ninety right now?
What's that?
So, where is that two hundred ninety right now? Where's it sitting?
Well, basically, uh, a- as we told you in September, health insurance rates are going to only increase one percent. That, the, the R A F consortium does that on a calendar year, but our budget is on a fiscal year. So we had projected the second half of this year, the rates would go up eight point four percent. They're only going up one percent, so we're, we're yielding, we'd reap the benefits of that health insurance premium being a lot lower than we had budgeted this year.
I think if you changes would lift the morale a lot. And we all probably hear a lot about them comparing their school to Burger and how they have um a few things that look nicer than their school. So if we do have the budget aside, I think our future's going to be great.
O- other thoughts? Anyone? Any dissenting?
I think it's worth, it's worth pursuing, because I think it's gonna, not just the staff, the students. And we know that that's, we're some of the angst is right now. I think that's really important to be looking at, to look at them and a positive.
It's an equity issue.
Right. Okay. Well, I think everyone's in agreement. Let's pursue that. A long time, and they, they will persist, but we're working, to the extent we can work on them, we will. So I think it's very important. Anything else?
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna move into board member reports. As we do that, oh, I'm sorry, no, we hit to do our new business.
Yeah.
At this point, um, I would entertain a motion uh with respect to the parent appeal.
I make a motion to deny the appeal.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Moved by Diane, seconded by Nikki. Discussion on the appeal. Seeing none, all in favor, your vote in favor is to deny the appeal. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? Okay, the appeal is denied. Um, at this point, we'll, we'll move into board member reports. And the first report is about the County School Board Association Legislative Committee, meeting of November seventh. Virtually the entire meeting concerned, uh, I know both loved the meeting.
This is always a good one.
It was really, yeah. Anyway, it was a, virtually the entire meeting involved a request from a consortium that includes the Chamber of Commerce and others, that the County School Board Association join on a letter, co-sign a letter uh to the legislature supporting increasing the age for the purchase of tobacco from eighteen to twenty-one. And it was a very divisive issue, and uh there was a lot of controversy about it, and ultimately, no decision was reached. And, and you were already gone by then, I think. So it's gonna come back up at the next meeting. Um, so that was pretty much what the discussion was about. Plus, I did send out the minutes to everyone. Uh, the board president's meeting later that day, um, many things were discussed. The biggest thing, actually, was there are a few districts that are starting superintendent searches, um, and there were a lot of questions about how our search went. We told them it was terrible, but we made out okay.
We got, we got the best candidate.
They're too late. Unfortunately, they missed out, that's right. So, um, so that's really what the biggest topic was at that, at that meeting. Information exchange.
Alright, I couldn't remember, and I didn't bring my notes. I asked Nikki if she couldn't, but otherwise we know Nellon. All I remember is really what Nellon told us at the end, so I couldn't even remember what it was called. I don't know, you don't have it?
I mean, I don't know, remember, I didn't bring my notes, my notes are in my other bag.
It was about social media, it was about board members, some board members behaving badly sometimes, talking to each other, things like that. Things to avoid, basically.
Overall, yes. I probably remembered Nellon talking more than anyone.
Okay. Instructional space.
Oh, that's me. Um, we looked at the element, uh the space pro- projections that will need for next year and the next five years. Um, everything's looking good. Um, it's going to get real tight at Ballmer, um, going out, you know, three, four, or five years. It's, it's very tight. It's, it's, yeah. We also went through the different um housing development projects that are going on in our different towns. Um, nothing really too new, um, nothing huge going on that was unexpected. Um, a couple of things did drop off that have been on hold for several years, um, but, in Henrietta, I should say. A couple of things did drop off that have been on hold for several years, but in Henrietta, I should say. Riverton Parcel A is now officially on hold. And then the Howlett Acres South, which is on the north side of Martin Road and east of East River, is on hold as well. And we had worked with partners to come up with some ideas on how to lessen the stress of, especially Ballmer. Pat collected all those, we didn't have time to talk about it at that meeting. So that'll be at our next meeting, what some of the ideas people had to discuss.
What about the project that was on Brighton, Henrietta Town Road, is it still in progress?
That and City Gate are both, probably not going to happen, I may take them off the list next year. Both the estates, the Glazer Estate and the Costello Estate are.
It's a mess.
Over the Costello Estate, yeah.
Everything's going to stand still.
I was thinking more of the Glazer ones, that was a lot of houses.
Yeah, Costello, that's in Brighton though, right, that's the.
But it's in our district, it's in our district.
West Brighton, it's in our.
One little place, City Gate is in.
It's in our district, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I knew exactly where it is.
Okay, any other instructional space questions? Budget Advisory Council.
That's me as well.
Yep.
We met last night. We just started going over the rough proposal, a lot of great questions last night. I know one that stuck out was asking about endowments and, you know, why don't we call and ask for money? Because he was, it's a younger community member and he was like, well, RIT doesn't, you know, all the colleges do it, why can't we? And Andy was kind enough to explain the background that they did try that for the fieldhouse here and it failed miserably. So, because we can raise taxes, we can have taxes here, we collect money away, but as a college, they cannot do that, so that's the only way of getting funds is through people donating. And people feel like their taxes go towards the public education and enough is enough, they don't need to give anymore, so. And, you know, it was just a preliminary, nothing really in-depth, there was no really chatting at all, just looking at the numbers. And Andy went through and explained where some of the bigger variances were, you know, a five percent increase in two thousand twenty, twenty-one. Do we all know the VA hospital, the RGE substation coming on? And, you know, talked about the one percent increase helped us out immensely in our budget. And then, I think that's actually really at the utilization forecast and show people exactly how if we go on the path that we're going on, our funds are going to be depleted in four or five years. There's going to be nothing left for us to have in our reserves. So we have to figure out ways to make strategic cuts and how, you know, do we go above the tax cap in a few years, that type of thing, so.
I'd raise one question though, not to you, but more to Andy. That recently, the town indicated, I heard in a conversation with some of the folks from the town, that the RGE substation may not come online till two thousand twenty-two, have you heard that?
I haven't, it doesn't surprise me even how long it's taking to get started.
Yeah, that may be something to track down a little bit because that may impact our projections a little bit, right?
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, I just heard that last week, that they're thinking it's going to be delayed.
Wow.
All right. Before we move into board meeting recap, I promised Karen that I would mention, that I would forget, but I actually didn't, to mention a question she had about the program and service review that we're doing at our next meeting and whether people want to get the program and service information in hard copy or if you're willing to get it as a board doc.
Hard copy.
All right, not as a board doc, Google Doc.
Hard copy, it's too hard to read otherwise.
Oh, it's really big, so I think hard copy makes a lot of sense, but wanted to test people's views on it, okay.
I'll have to put it both places because it's the actual, it's a meeting.
Right, no, I understand that. Right, but we won't get it as a Google Doc, just want it in hard copy. Okay, all right, so now let's go to recap and preview.
All right, so we're going to further discuss the alternative high school lunches. We're going to get the paperwork in so that we can pilot the summer food program at Sherman. And we have a board visit at Burger this Thursday at six forty-five and our next meeting, we're beginning at six.
I have a question, why should I park for the board for the visit at Burger? Do you park in the loop or do you park up at Ballmer?
Park in the back.
In the back, will it be open?
I'm sorry, the back of what? I don't know.
Okay.
You'll get caught in that front loop with buses coming and going and.
But I didn't know if the back doors open, like I don't know if there's security, if they cut their entrances like the high school. Because the high school only has the two entrances.
We could just, we could make sure that they have somebody down there to let people.
Do we have to have a secret knock?
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Diane, seconded by James. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. We are adjourned.